Are we ready? Called a Red Lodge Planning Board meeting of October ninth to order. Can I have a roll call?
Uh, Bloomer? Dee Benedetto?
Here.
Whistler?
Here.
Boise?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Gray?
Sure.
All right, um, I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
A second.
Are there any corrections or air corrections or?
I was kind of, um, flummoxed by the top of it when it said virtual, five attendees, and then in parentheses, two public, and then in person and attend- I didn't understand any of that. How many people? I mean, later on, it had the, um, planning board, but how many people were present and how many people were online? And, and I, I have no idea.
I think John, according to this, John was the only one online.
He was online.
Right, but that's, that's the planning board. But at the very top of the minutes, it has some sort of thing about virtual and, and in person and within those are like two public.
We normally haven't been keeping track of those such things.
Like how many, how much, yeah, how many public attend? I don't know. I, I, I'd kind of like to see that, like tonight, we have one in person, we have one online, and we have a representative from Great West. And I'd kind of like to see it broken out that way so it's really clear. Does that make sense? Does anybody else kind of wondering how many people actually were in attendance based on those minutes? Besides the planning board?
I think we get kind of, right?
What's that?
Do we get counted twice?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't know either. It, it was, it was somewhat confusing. Could we break it down?
Yeah, I mean, those numbers, they include everyone for the planning board. The roll call is just separate for who's, which board members are here, and then those numbers at the top are everyone in person and then everyone online.
And I would probably add at that specific time in the meeting because five more people could join and or drop off or, or three. So, so are you just saying that the roll call is here?
Right.
Do we just omit that there were attendants? Or you say, three people attended online, five people attended in person and period, and that's done?
Yeah, to me, that would be, that would mean that the public, or you could start it off with public attendees and say, you know, five in person, three online, and then you could have representatives from Great West or WW, what's the initials? You know?
Staff, are you comfortable accepting that direction?
Do you see where I'm going with that, Greg?
Yeah.
And then you've already got the roll call, so I don't think you need to, um, include that in the attendees.
Okay, heard and accepted, and we'll do that in the future.
Thank you.
Well, I think you need to include the roll call. The members that are here.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
You mean a, at the top?
Well, no, the way it is.
The way he has it. No, I like the way he has it. I just didn't know whether it was included in that attendance at the top.
Oh.
That's where I was kind of getting confused.
Just roll call is this, from the public, three online, five in person.
Yeah.
But again, that's at a snapshot at that given time because people might say in and out.
That's always on. That's always on. Uh, that to me would, would be a little clearer.
And it'll be off because somebody walked in three minutes after we acquired those numbers. So as long as you realize those limitations, we've got the direction.
Just add another one to it. It's not a big deal. Anyway, that would be, that would be my, my suggestion for the minute.
Are there any corrections to the minutes?
I didn't see any.
Night. Um, have a roll call, please?
Gray?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Boise?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Dee Benedetto?
Yes.
Bloomer?
All right, um. So go on to, uh, communications from the board, um, urban renewal district. Um, the only thing I have to report is the next meeting will be, uh, next Monday, um, at five thirty here, and a couple of items that are on the agenda is to, um, discuss, uh, divisioning exercise, uh, with Kansas State University. Discuss, uh, Red Lodge growth policy draft, at least up to bring them up to date and where things are at with that, and, uh, discussion about expanding the Red Lodge Urban Renewal Districts. So those are kind of the topics on the, the agenda for discussion for that meeting. Any questions?
Do you know what the, were they, are talking about, uh, expanding the U R D?
I think it's just kind of based on what we've been discussed in previous meetings about expanding it to the top of Brewery Hill to include, um, the potential for, um, affordable housing project. Dave?
Mr. Chair, just as a related item, there is a recent judicial decision that we've been made aware of at the city level. Um, when the right-of-way is abandoned, what happens is that land is split and goes to the two adjoining properties. There is currently a section of what is listed in the city, and also, um, coincidentally, as part of the urban renewal district, um, that there's a question, uh, that has been deeded over to, there's a judicial ruling that says that land now belongs to the adjacent landowners. So there's a question about where the city boundary resides and if there's an impact because if you've got ninety percent of a lot that's in the county and ten percent in the city. Um, so we're waiting for, for, um, guidance and direction on that, but there's a possibility we may end up adjusting the map indirectly. Obviously, if it's not, no longer in the city, then it'll no longer be part of the urban renewal district either. So just, just as a heads up of awareness, I don't anticipate that's going to be anything immediate, um, but that, but that's out there.
Okay. Do you have, uh, the city council updating?
Um, we had a discussion on the land that, that the mayor just referred to, which is on the northeast side of Broadway, well, yeah, still Broadway, um, just past, uh, Bear Tooth Electric, and it's a large parcel of land, but the railroad right-of-way was abandoned. And when you even look at our map, it shows that it's in the city limits, that abandoned portion. So, um, there was just discussion and trying to update to see where that goes. Um, there is a land swap that's being discussed. Um, there's a half acre in the middle of a five acre parcel between the old road that went to, um, the low-income housing at the top of Brewery Hill and then the new road. So there's a portion in there, and right in the middle of it is a half acre. And, um, so there was a discussion on that. It's C four north, or C, yeah, C, yeah, whatever, yeah, C four north. Um, and that must be the part that you're talking about maybe including in the U R D, which would be really good. Um, I had brought up an idea that I had in our forum, which was to change the makeup of the planning board to always include a member of the downtown business, uh, a business owner. I mean, we're luck, we're lucky that John is in the city limits and is a downtown business owner. But I think it would really benefit this board to always have a business owner on the board, whether they live in town or not. And I understand that our makeup for the planning board was designed by the county. So the county, we would have to go to the county if we decided that that would be a good makeup of the planning board. I just, it's just that the downtown business people don't have any say in city business because the bulk of them live outside the city limits, and we make a lot of decisions that affect them and their business. And it would be nice to have that representation as much as you're good, but you're really here as a county rep. And John, John isn't a pointy, but it would be nice to always have one business owner on this planning board. So we had discussed that as well a little bit.
Is that something that we would propose through the county, or how would that work?
I'm assuming that that's, that if this board agreed to that, then we would, uh, talk to the county and see if they will alter their, their makeup on the, on the planning board.
Would that be a huge undertaking?
I don't think so. We'd get to have a consensus of this board and the city's guidance with it.
And probably the city council as well.
That's what me and the city council, we have any bodies.
Yeah.
Consent your input.
All right, you have anything from the county?
I do not, but is there, Phil is here. Is there anything since last week? Two weeks, sorry. They blend together.
It truly isn't. I'm not, not that I can think of offhand.
Okay. All right, um, we'll move on to old business, um, continuing the discussion of, uh, growth policy primarily, but I think I'll start off first with the, any updates to the downtown master plan? And guess I'll turn that over to you, Jeremy.
Uh, I think, yeah, I think Greg got the update from Kevin and Chad on that, so I'll, I'll let Greg answer that.
Yeah, so I talked to Chad Hanson with Great West, and their plan is to get a draft to the planning board, uh, in the next couple of weeks towards the end of October, and then hopefully it should be ready for a presentation early November after you all have had a chance to review it. That's kind of their tentative plan. I think Chad needs to share it up with Jim Jarvis, but, uh, the, the goal would be early November presentation. Or discussion, I guess.
All right, um, I guess we'll move on to a discussion with the draft growth policy, and I think where we left off, I guess for tonight, we'll continue the discussion with the future land use map, and then if we get through that, move on to looking at the map for the parks and trails, and then the airport proximity map. So I guess, uh, I think everybody, I hope everybody kind of got a copy of the updated future land use map that was, uh, reflects the discussions we had at the last meeting. Do you want to go ahead and lead the discussion, Jeremy?
Yes, let me, I'm trying to share my screen here, so I'll hold on a second. Um, so yeah, so, um, you all got an updated map based on your last meeting, um, with some edits. Um, I, I looked over this with Greg and, and Kevin, and, uh, you know, per Greg's, Greg was at the meeting. Uh, Greg was at the meeting and, and stuff, and so, you know, based on our discussions, this looks like it was updated per your comments. Um, the only thing I had, um, was after kind of talking about things over the last few weeks and thinking about things, I think, I get, my recommendation, I think, at this point would be to shrink this down to the one mile, the one mile planning area boundary. Um, I think that would hopefully help a little bit with some county concerns on, on, you know, planning for land use outside the city limits and really limiting us to that one mile buffer that we're supposed to be planning for. Um, and, you know, where, where the city, where the county has to send us applications for comment and those sorts of things. Um, I, I guess at this point, based on kind of the feedback that I think we're getting and, and discussions and, and, you know, thinking about things over the last few weeks, I think it might be good to shrink this down to just that, that one mile buffer, that one mile planning area boundary. Um, that's just my thought, but, um, I wanted to throw that out there. And then, uh, yeah, at this point, I think, uh, I think everything was captured from the last meeting, though, and, um, I think tonight, just making sure that those things were, were done how you wanted them to be done, and then, you know, preliminarily moving this on. I guess at this point, too, I'll also bring up, um, that I did talk to Forrest Mandeville, uh, this week at, at the planners conference in, in Lewestown, and, um, we did have a discussion about opening up the lights of communication and collaborating with the, the county planning board and, and the county on, um, you know, planning issues surrounding the city of Red Lodge and, and this future land use map. Um, we've, he's already got the planning board agenda set for the October meeting, but we talked about getting on the, uh, November planning board meeting and either doing a joint city-county planning board meeting or, um, just being on their agenda and bringing this to the planning, the county planning board and having discussion about it. So, um, I guess I, I just wanted to let you know that I, I have started those discussions. I reached out. Um, I kind of wanted to bring that to this board and see what your thoughts were after you've had a chance to talk this over and, and finish this up, um, this draft up, and then we'll, uh, maybe decide how you want to proceed on that front, so.
So, yeah, as I understand what you said, that there's discussion about possibly having a joint city-county board meeting in November, is that what you said, Jeremy?
Correct. Their meetings are the third Tuesday of every month. So, uh, tentatively, we would, we would, we would try to get on their agenda for, for the third, or we could try to work on setting up a special meeting, uh, at another time. Um, but that's preliminary, preliminarily what Forrest and I talked about. Um, if this board would rather see us do something different, then I can go back to him and, you know, we can work through that. Um, that's just was our initial discussion.
Okay.
So that, that would be, uh, let me look, that would be, uh, what, the nineteenth of November would be their planning board meeting? And your second planning board meeting would be on the twentieth. So potentially, maybe we just move the, your planning board meeting to the nineteenth and just kind of hold a, a joint planning board meeting between the county and the city, maybe? Or you could still keep your planning board meeting, just have a joint meeting on the, on the, on the nineteenth.
All right, well, I'll sort of bring that back to the table and get some feedback from, from the board members here. What do you, what do you think?
I think the only question is whether or not it's, um, a joint meeting in an open forum such as the county planning or if we do it separately. Either night works for me. It doesn't matter.
Uh, it would be a joint, I mean, it would be a regularly scheduled, you know, like a regular meeting. So it'd be an open meeting because, you know, you'd have a quorum essentially of both boards. So it'd have to be an open, at, you know, a, a noticed public meeting for both boards. So, um, it would technically be a joint city-county planning board meeting, I think.
No matter when we have it, then it's public, right? Thank you.
What's that?
No matter when we have it, public.
Could you speak up a little bit more, Jeremy? I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if anybody else is, but.
We could have more volume. Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, I can try, but it might be on the vol, your volume, Ann.
That would actually be, anyway, either night works for me. Um, I'm, I'm a little leery about putting it on one of their regular nights because they're going to have other things on the agenda, and it would seem to me that, that this might run long. So I, I guess it's up to the county planning board whether they want to have a separate meeting to discuss this or whether they feel there's enough time on their agenda because they'll have other items.
Right, unless it's the only thing on the agenda, right?
I, I doubt that.
From talking to For, from talking to Forrest, it sounds like their October meeting is, is pretty busy, um, and they've already got the agenda set for that with several subdivision applications they're reviewing. Um, but right now, at, at this point, he's saying the November meeting looks fairly open. But that could change, too. Um, I, I, you know, I don't know. But, uh, right now, it sounds like the November meeting's fairly open. But, um, yeah, I mean, I could definitely reach out to Forrest again and say, you know, maybe it would be better to have a, a separate meeting, joint meeting, not on a regularly scheduled city or county planning board night, just specifically just to talk about the future land use map um, that the city of Red Lodge is preparing, and that way, that's the only thing that's on the agenda essentially for both of you.
That would work.
What are you, have any thoughts, Marie?
I say we just humbly ask the county planning board to be on their agenda in November and, uh, to just kind of level out as much, uh, political undue fallout with misconceptions as, as possible, and we, we do it on their turf and we do it with their rules. And if, and if they don't have as much time as we would like them to have on that, then we'll set another meeting at that point. But I think at this point, we should just ask to be on their agenda and, and take whatever timeframe they can give us. Also, another side question, um, what is in the state statute as far as, does it have to be at least a mile out? Or do they give parameters for, for this?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a mile, um, so we're, we're technically supposed to.
A mile or, a mile or more? Okay, so it.
No, it's, it's a mile, um, and so it, it's pretty clear in statute that you're, you're supposed to, there, you know, uh, you have a one-mile planning area buffer kind of around cities and towns, uh, in the state, and, and you're supposed to kind of, not everybody does it, but, you know, you're supposed to kind of plan for future growth and, and development and infrastructure in that mile buffer. And the idea is that in that mile buffer, you, you coordinate planning, land use planning with the county, right? It's not that you're, it's not that you're reviewing anything in that buffer because it's not your jurisdiction. It's just that you're trying to coordinate that planning effort between the city and the county. Um, and so, because the county is required by state law, and where this comes from is the county is required by state law to send subdivision applications to the city for comment if it's within a mile of, of the city boundary. So that's where this kind of comes from, is that, okay, well, if we don't have any plan for the land use within that mile planning area boundary, then how, how do we provide useful comment to the county on a subdivision application, right? Um, so that, that's where it stems from, is that, that part of the subdivision rules um, that say, you know, they need to get comment from the city if it's within a mile. So, um, that's where it stems from. Um, again, uh, some places do it, some places don't. It's just, um, in my.
Comment twice, as far as some people do it, some people don't. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking for clarification so it's on the record, so there's no misconception later. Um, and I'm not saying, I, so two questions. Does it have to be a mile? And that's fine as long as it states that in the Montana statute. The other clarification is you just told me twice that some people do it and some people don't. Well, don't you have to do it if it's statute?
Yes, but a lot of places don't because it's hard. How's that for an answer? So, you know, they get.
If they don't do it because it's hard, would they be going against state statute?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, an example.
Is this mandatory?
So not, so the growth policy statute.
Is this mandatory?
So the growth policy statute, um, says that you, you need to do this. It, it, none of its, I mean, all of it's stuff that you're supposed to be doing. I guess there's no penalties necessarily for not doing it, but, you know, when you're, when, when, for instance, I'll give you a couple of examples, so, uh, or, or an example, um, infrastructure, infrastructure grants for, for, uh, infrastructure money. So the first, one of the very first questions on a grant application is, do you have a growth policy? And does your growth policy plan for growth and development? And you don't, how, how can you say you have planned for growth and development um, outside your city limits if you don't have a future land use map? Right? How, how do you know what infrastructure you need to supply water and sewer to growth areas if you don't have a future land use map? Right? So it's, it's kind of a twofold situation, like you need it for grant applications. Um, and we, and then the other example is if we have an annexation application and we have to update a zoning map to annex a piece of property, and zoning has to be done in compliance with the growth policy. That's very clear in Montana statute, right? You cannot, you can't, you, you have to do zone map amendments in compliance with your growth policy. So if you don't have a future land use map that identifies future land use outside your city limits, then how can you adequately zone that area if somebody asks you to, um, annex in? Right? How can you, how can you zone that in compliance with your growth policy? Does that make sense? So those are a couple of examples. Uh, as far as like, you know, places doing it, not doing it. Um, a recent example is City Libby. So City Libby went through a, a, a big growth policy update. Uh, hadn't done it for a very long time. They, they got to the future land use map, and as you might expect, a bunch, uh, you know, several county citizens came in in opposition to the growth policy because they were showing future land use outside their city limits. And those people wouldn't listen when people said, well, we're not trying to zone you, we're not trying to annex you. We just, we have to plan for future growth and development, just like I'm telling you right now, right? Well, the, the city council there and the planning board said, well, we just don't want to deal with it right now, so we're not going to do it. So they took the future land use map out of it. Well, then, when they went to go apply for grants for infrastructure, the grant agency said, do you have a growth policy? And have you planned for this future growth and development that you're saying that you need this infrastructure for? And they said, yes, we have a growth policy, but we did not do the future land use map. They, their score on that grant application was lower because they did not have that future land use map. And so then we came back about six months after that because they realized, oh crap, we need a future land use map, and then we amended the growth policy, put the future land use map back in. So, so that, that's an example of how that played out in, in Libby, right? So, yeah, no, it's, you're not going to get in trouble if you don't have a future land use map. Um, like the, the state's not going to sue the city, right, if you don't have a future land use map. But where it comes into play is on future land use decisions for bringing property into the city and going after infrastructure grants, um, you know, for infrastructure development. That's where it's going to hurt the city.
Okay, the reason, uh, well, I'm not against it. The reason why I'm trying to drill this down is be, for clarification, is because these are the same issues we're going to have when we go to the county. So we need a angle to speak from where we're not trying to infringe on their authority because that's what the perception would be, so we need a plan when we go into. So we need a plan when we go into, in my opinion, if we want their support. I'm not trying to be a pest, I'm just trying to drill it down so we have, if we have clarity moving forward with our plan to, of proposal, we, we want the county in agreement and on board with, with the city, right?
Agreed, yep. And that's what we're, yep, that's what we're trying to get to, for sure.
Because these are the same questions and angles that, I'm trying to be the antagonist here. So because this is what the misconception, we're dealing with misconceptions too, of power grabs and things like that. So we need to, we need to know going into it what we're, what our thoughts are.
And this is a new um, concept for us. We've never had a future land use map. And so we just need to be really clear on why we need it. And that way, when the county asks us, we can explain that uh, zoning, but we are identifying probable areas for low density, medium density, based on what's already there, honestly, within one mile of the city.
Yep, no, I mean, that's exactly what we need to do. And I think once we get Pat, once we, once you guys say, yep, we're good to go with this, right? Then um, I can, I can work, you know, I can work with uh, with, with Kevin and Greg and we'll come up with talking points so that we're kind of all on the same page, right? Um, this is why we're doing it.
I wanna continue around the table, John.
So, one of the things that's been brought up in previous meetings was also that legislation will be passing this in the future to where it is a requirement. So is that still the case? I mean, that's what, how it was presented two meetings ago, maybe three?
Right, yeah.
That it was, this is something that's coming in the, in the pipeline from a legislative perspect- perspective is what's gonna be needed? Is that still?
So that's the way planning, that's the way planning in Montana is going. Um, right now, it's, it, so the last legislative session passed what they call the Land Use Planning Act. And what it did was it said, okay, if you're, if you're in a county that has a population over seventy thousand people and you have, you are a municipality with over five thousand people, then you have to, uh, you have to do this very complicated land use planning process. In wh- where basically what it does is it, 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 it does a bunch of housing studies. It does a bunch of uh, land use planning stuff. Um, and then it, 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 it maps out exactly what we're doing here. You know, where do we want high density? Where do we want low density? Where do we want open space? Where do, blah, 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 right? Exactly what we're doing here, kind of, but um, what it does on the development side though, is that it, it streamlines the development process to where if you're following that future land use plan, um, so we say, say we say some pla- one place on here is, is high density. And somebody comes in with an application to the, to the city of Red Lodge to annex in and they're doing exactly what we say in the plan use plan, right? Then the process is administrative. Like, we've already gone through this big public process to adopt this land use plan. And now the subdivision and annexation process is really just like an administrative process because um, now you've already done all that stuff upfront, right?
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that. But, so we fall, right now, currently, we fall under that population requirement, then is what you're saying.
Yes, so, but.
That requirement's probably gonna go to where we do fall into it?
I, yes, so, at the planning conference this week, basically kinda what they're telling us now is that, you know, this, this was an initial first step in trying to get this implemented in the state of Montana, right? And the idea is that eventually this is gonna trickle down to all of the cities in the state. And so my, my understanding, I mean, they don't, you know, they don't have a crystal ball either, so it's hard to tell when that might happen. But it sounded to me like most people are anticipating within ten years, it's gonna be a requirement of all cities and towns in the state to do this. Um, and so, you know, I think this.
Can I ask one quick question though? So what if we have a tentative instead of a growth plan bo- map? What if we have a tentative? And then that allows us to say, we've thought through it, we have a tentative plan and a tentative map instead of implementing it? What's the difference?
We use tentative by its very nature, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what your growth policy is.
Conversation, we don't have to have this conversation with the county. It, it, we don't have to bring up, I mean, there's a lot of things that's tense right now from what we're hearing that we don't have to worry about because it's just tentative.
I don't know that we're hearing anything yet.
Well, it's, it's just a hypothetical, sorry. There are people that are.
It, it is tentative, right? It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's exactly what it's called, it's a future land use map. This is what we, this is what Red Lodge would like to see as they grow, right? So it's a tentative map, I mean, this could change in two years, this could change in five years. You know, it could change in a year. I mean, it, it's, it's all, the growth policy itself, all it is is a policy. It, it, it's not a regulation, right? So all of the things in a growth policy are goals and objectives that the city wants to meet. But none of it is regulation, right? So it's all, it, it's all, it, it's all essentially tentative when you think about it.
Yeah, thank you.
So if it's not mandatory, like, let's say we needed to go after a grant today for some infrastructure in town, would we not be able to get that grant today if, since we don't have this plan?
Not, not saying you wouldn't get the grant, but you're, you would score less because you don't have, you're not planning for growth, right? So what those agencies are looking at now, more than they ever have, is are you planning for housing and growth and development in your community? And those communities that are doing that are scoring higher. Those communities that haven't done that are not scoring, you're scoring less, right? So it, I mean, you still may get the grant depending on other circumstances in that grant application. And of course, the quality of other grant applications during that same time period, right? But it definitely hurts with your scoring. So, you know, you might, for instance, if there's a hundred points and, and this was ten points and you didn't do it, you're, you're not gonna get those ten points, right? And somebody who did is gonna get those, those ten points. That makes sense.
John, do you have any thoughts about meeting with the county planning board? That's kinda where we started.
Well, yeah, no, I, and that's the whole point, right? If we're just have a tentative, do we need to meet with the county at that point? Because it's a city issue, it's not a county issue.
You still want them to understand what you're doing.
Well, I, I get that, I'm a hundred percent get that. But what I'm just trying to say is, how do we don't have the tension, right? It's.
If the purpose of this is to collaborate and cooperate and work together, then why would we do it without their knowing? Okay, so you need some finesse with all of it.
I think if it was presented the way that, that.
It's, it's a hundred percent representation, yeah.
You know, i- is that this is a future land map that, that we were thinking of today in October of twenty twenty four. And if in a couple of years, we decide to go ahead and activate the annexation of Gradview, we have this, but we are, we're gonna need to extend our infrastructure to them. And boy, I'd rather have a grant than pay for it.
Right.
And so we can say, yeah, we have a future land map.
We're ready.
We're ready. And I think that the counties would understand that as well because we're not really zoning anything outside the city limits. We're just kinda eyeballing.
Well, a hundred percent, a hundred percent agree.
We're trying to follow the rule before it's a rule.
Yeah, I mean, so you don't need to get, so you don't need to get approval of the planning board for this. You're, what you're just doing is you're collaborating with them so that hopefully they can convey to people within their jurisdiction that, hey, this is, they're not zoning you, right? They're not annexing you, this is, you know, that's not what they're doing. Um, they're just planning, that's all they're doing is they're just planning, right? They're not, they're, they don't have any jurisdiction in the county, um, they never will. Um, it's just planning for future growth with, of the city boundary, right? Um, and, and just collaborating with them so that hopefully you head off when you have your, you know, public hearing on the growth policy, you don't have people coming and banging on chairs and tables saying, you're trying to zone us and you're trying to annex us and you're trying to um, ins- insert your control over us, right? And, and just trying to collaborate with the county to maybe head some of that off.
Sue, do you have any thoughts?
I kinda have questions. I'm trying to decide how it would, would, would work. Um, because, you know, the different entities have set times that they normally have meetings. Apparently, it sounded to me like the county normally would meet on a Tuesday, whereas we normally meet on a Wednesday. Um, how official would our meeting be? And how do you determine if you have to vote on something, whose vote counts? And.
So I, I don't think you're voting on anything. It, it's simply an informational meeting, right? You're, you're collaborating with the county to get, so it'd be just like, think of it this way. So on your downtown master plan, on your growth policy, you've been collaborating with groups within the city, right? The business groups, the, you know, different groups and having meetings with them to get their buy-in and get their input. That's all you're doing with the planning board. You're just, it's there, think of them as another, um, another group of people that you're collaborating with to get their input, right? Because as a stakeholder essentially, right? Because whether you like it or not, you're, you're in Carbon County. And they, you know, you're, you, you have to collaborate with these guys, especially on land use because um, it, it, it just, it gets complicated when you don't. Um, you know, it, it, I've been in situations where, you know, counties and cities don't get along. And when you do have stuff that is within that one mile rate boundary, things can get pretty um, tense sometimes, right? And so if you start collaborating with them now, um, it just makes it easier down the road. That's just, that's, that's my opinion, but um, that you wouldn't be voting on anything at the meeting. It would just be simply an informational meeting where you would be gathering public input from the planning board.
That was my point basically, was whether for us to know upfront whether or not we're gonna have any binding votes.
No.
So you've thanked, you, thank you, you addressed that, I appreciate it.
Now, are we the ones that are gonna tell them or inform them of the state law that says that any uh, subdivisions in the county, but within one mile of this, of the city, that they do have to talk to us about and get our comments and our opinions? Or I'm wondering if they already know that?
Um, I mean, I, I can coordinate with Forrest on that and see, you know, how he wants to handle that piece of it. I mean, I mean, I'd be fine telling him that, um, but it'd probably be better coming from him. Their planner, but um, you know, I think between the two of us, we can, we, if they, I, you know, I just don't know if they have been, because I just started help, you know, working with you guys on this stuff. So I don't know if they've even been doing that or if there's been anything that close to city, the city for a while. So um, I think it's, again, I think it's just a collaboration, right? I think it's starting that, that line of communication and, and so that, that, so that their planner and their planning board feel comfortable like, okay, well, you know, if so, if it's within a mile, we need, we need to talk to these guys. We need to send it to them, get their comments. They, they can ignore our comments, right? There, there's nothing binding in the law that says you have to address the city's comments if you're within a mile. Like you, there's nothing there that, that's, that hasn't, they just have to send it to you for comment. So, you know, but it, it's just more of a courtesy thing, like, hey, you're within a mile, you've probably sent this to the city for comment, kind of a thing, you know what I mean?
There was a subdivision that was granted in the county within that one mile buffer. But I think it was a year or two ago.
So, can I ask a question, John?
Go ahead.
So um, I, this is an open question from our last session. We were asking if, it seems that the county understood the one-mile buffer notification to the city, from what I recall. But the question was, is the one-mile buffer that the county's looking at the same as the one-mile buffer that we're looking at? And so we didn't, we haven't had that answered yet.
I mean, I think this will help, right? I mean, I think if you have the, that one-mile buffer you defined in the growth policy and you collaborate. Well, that, that's the thing, I mean, you know, I, I don't think anybody's really defined it though. Like, I, I, you know, I just don't think that's ever been done here that I could tell that anybody's ever said, okay, well, here's our one-mile buffer, you know, county, here's our growth policy. If you have a subdivision within this one-mile buffer that we have identified on the map, you know, we'd, we'd appreciate it if you send that to us for comment, like, as, as required by state law, right? Um, that, you know.
Jeremy, don't we need to, wouldn't we want to have an agreement that, that the one-mile buffer is the same whether you're the city planning looking at it or the county planning looking at it? So that we're looking, we're, we're all operating under apple to apple?
Yeah, I mean, that might, that's probably a great idea. You know, once we establish this, if, if this is the map, like, if this is the boundary in the growth policy, I, I think it would be a great idea to, to do uh, an MOU or something between the city and the county. You know, outlining the responsibility that, or outlining that, you know, here's, this is the map. This is, this is the map we're both gonna use. And if, if there's a development within this boundary, you know, the, the county will send that to the city for comment. Um, you know, per, per state law requirements. I mean, I think that'd be a really simple MOU. I think until we get this map done and we, and we, and we get comments and feedback from the county, I think an MOU is premature right now. Um, but I think once the growth policy's adopted and, and everybody's happy with it, then, uh, well, not, not everybody will be happy with it, but um, you, you get consensus at least, then, um, then I think an MOU would be a great idea.
So there's always a difference between the truth and what people believe. I want that on record too.
Oh, yeah.
And the county, as someone who lives in the county versus living in the city, but I own property in the city, okay, that's, that's my situation. Um, anyway, it's, it's the conception, I'm not saying it's the truth. So this is what, because they look at it that, oh, yeah, you don't have any power now, but it's a foot in the door for more red tape in the future. That's how somebody from the county would perceive it. Um, the county planning board, I'm concerned, would perceive it as a, as a, as a power grab. Now, it's not what the truth is, it's what the perception is. And so how, how do we? And since it's not mandatory, which I was under the impression that it was, and I understand why, why you wanna get it done, I get it. But you can't have a half-hour conversation with every upset person who lives two miles out of the county. Because it, it, the perception is, in my opinion, is it would be a, a power grab, like, oh, now I gotta go through this too. And even though I get it, how do we, should, should we pose it as, hey, so we can make sure that we get these, these grants if we need them, this is something we have to do? Like, we need a um, we need a, a reference point, we need a.
And, and I, and I, and I'm more than happy to provide the talking points uh, once we get past this and, and we get chugging towards a planning board meeting um, where we can talk to them. But I, I, you're absolutely right. I mean, I think we, but that's where the, the meeting with the planning board, I think, is essential. Because if we can get them on board and, and explain it to them that, no, this, we're not, we have no jurisdiction there. And we don't want jurisdiction there, right? You, you know, guys don't, you have enough stuff to deal with in the city limits, right? You don't wanna deal with all that too, right? Um, I think it's, I, I think we, if we can convey it to the planning board, then that can help them. Um, you know, if people ask them about it, then they can convey that. The more people you can get on board with it in the county and city, the, the easier it's gonna be to convey that message, right?
Okay, here's another angle, but there's gotta be a benefit to bringing the count, like, what is the benefit to the county planning board? I know it sounds petty, I, but this is what we're gonna run into, I'm telling you. So what is it, we have.
I don't know, I don't know what their, I don't know what the benefit for them is. I, I mean, I, you know, I honestly, I guess I don't know what the benefit, it, it benefits the city because, you know, you, it's for your land use planning for the city of Red Lodge. I, I think it, the benefit for them is that we're collaboratively land use planning the area around city Red Lodge. So that they, if we can get buy-in from them and, 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 and the city planning board has, you know, you guys both have buy-in on this plan, right? Then you're collaborating, you're collaboratively land, planning, you know, this area, right? So when they have land use decisions that come up that are within this, this land use, this, this one-mile buffer, they could reference this map and say, well, we've been working with the city on this and, you know, this is what we, you know, with the city envisioned this area to look like. And you, you know what I mean, like, it, I, I think that's where maybe some of the benefit might be. But other than that, I mean, there's, I don't think there's really a much of a benefit for the county unless they adopt it, something similar in their growth policy.
They, they get it from many people, like, if I was on the county planning board, this is what would be going through my, that's what, it, what is their reference to it and why we need to find a solid. And why we need to find a solid ground on, a, a solid point on bringing them on. It's integral that they are in agreement with us.
Well, well, listen, I mean, listen, all these people that live in this area around the city enjoy the city of Red Lodge, right? They all use city infrastructure. They all use city amenities, right? It, it's in the benefit of everybody with, within the area around Red Lodge to plan for the future growth and development of the city of Red Lodge, right? They, they benefit from the infrastructure just as much as the ci, people that live in the city. Um, I think that's how you, I think, I think that's how you could, could address that a little bit is be like, you know, yeah, you're in the county, but we're all in the city of Red Lodge. Even though you're in the county and, and this is the city, we're all city of Red Lodge. And we're trying to plan our future together.
We're all, we're all county residents too.
So, so what, this first meeting with the county is, is the, is the objective gonna be just to pretty much kinda get acquainted and, and discuss, begin the discussion? I guess I'm, would be a little bit hesitant to, at, at least at the first meeting to go to them and say, here's our future land use map or a draft of it. Or I guess when they're thinking about, uh, this meeting in November, I'm just kinda wondering if it shouldn't be a little bit more informal from the standpoint of, of we're working on a future land use map around Red Lodge. And, and here's kinda what we're thinking and asking for their input. But rather than saying, going at it from the standpoint, well, here's what we've come up with for a land use map. Guess.
So.
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
I'm trying, I guess I don't wanna go meet with the planning board without a set, the county planning board without a, a set objective for the meeting in terms of, of, of just building bridges basically as a first step. And then as a second step to, um, move into, into more of a in-depth conversation about future land use and, and what, what we're thinking of as the City of Red Lodge Planning Board.
Um, yeah, what if we, I, I would, I, I, yeah, I mean, those are good comments. I think what if we, I think it might be good to set this up more as like a workshop. And, and rather, like you said, maybe rather than saying, here, here's our map. Um, what do you think? Maybe we bring blank maps with just the planning area boundary on it and say, what do you guys think? Like have them mark it up, like have them mark up a few maps and say, you know, what, you know, you know, start off with our talking points. And then we dive in and say, we want, we want your, we want your input, right? And so then you can come back with their ideas. And then we can relook at this map and say, you know, are we close? Like what, you know, what do we, what do we need to, to change based on their, their ideas and their thoughts, right? Um, I mean, that's one way we could definitely do it. Um, the other way to do it would be to say, well, this is, this is, you know, we've worked several months on this map. You know, this is kinda what we were thinking, but we brought blank maps, right? Kinda like what I did with you guys when we first saw this, right? I kinda had a map that said, hey, this is what I'm kinda thinking based on existing land uses. You know, what do you think? And then had, and then had you guys mark up a map. So we could do it that way too, where it was like, well, we've worked on this for several months. And it's kinda based on existing land uses. But we, we really want it, we really want your input. So we brought some blank maps for you guys to look at this. Uh, we want you guys to mark these up and let's talk about it. And, and then let's incorporate your ideas into, into this map too, right? So we could do it several ways, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And, and the dates you were talking about were when, Jeremy?
Uh, well, their regular meeting date would be November nineteenth. But if we want, if we want to, I could work with Forrest and, and maybe we could do a, you know, a separate, a special meeting between now and, and the nineteenth, so that we're not, if, if that's what you guys want me to do, so that maybe it's a separate night and, and that's the only thing that you guys are gonna work on, right? So there's nothing else on the agenda essentially, like a workshop kind of a thing? Um, and, and maybe we just call it, maybe we call it a joint city-county planning board workshop. Um, it, it, rather than a meeting, maybe we call it a workshop and, and just say, we're, just like you kinda did with the downtown master plan, right? And we call it a workshop and say, we're just, we're workshopping this thing, right? This is not a formal meeting. This is not, you know, it has to be a public meeting, but it's not a formal meeting. Nobody's voting on anything. This is kinda keep it relaxed and just have a discussion about this, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't wanna push it sooner than the eleventh night, than, than November nineteenth. I don't, cause I don't think we're quite ready yet. Maybe we would be, but, but I would think, uh, November nineteenth would be the, the earliest if, um, cause we've only got basically two planning board meetings before the nineteenth.
So the question is, why can't we give them, what you just talked about, a blank map? Here's an explanation of why we're doing this. Let them digest it before we even talk about having a meeting. We want input and then request a workshop that allows them to actually think about what we're trying to do. Maybe come up with their map themselves and be able to present both of our sides at the same time, rather than walking in going, here's our plan. And I know we're not gonna do that, but that, that's, maybe that's an easier way for you and Forrest to have that discussion?
I mean, yeah, I, I'm willing, you know, I, and, and maybe that's the best course of action at this point. I, I got, you know, I kinda, I feel like I, I kinda understand where you guys are coming from here. Maybe it'd be good for me to call Forrest between now and the next meeting and, and get his thoughts because he knows the county planning board better, way better than I do. So I'd like to get his input on how, what he thinks we should do, you know, approach the planning board and see, you know, see what his thoughts are. And then maybe I come back to the next planning board meeting and we, you know, bring that information back to you guys and say, this is what Forrest and I talked about would be the best, uh, our recommendations for how to proceed. And then, you know, we can finalize how we wanna go forward.
I think, I think that's be having more of a informal discussion between you and Forrest to kinda get a better idea of what might be the better strategy. Sounds, sounds like maybe the way to go before we kinda commit to a, a meeting. Go ahead, Sue.
And I agree that that's probably a good starting point. I had, there, there are probably a number of questions that would be helpful in getting things, this going. I do recall several years back that the planning board members got a piece of correspondence from Forrest about a particular, um, thing that was coming before them that they had some concerns about. And they, it sounded like they felt like we should have some input. So that if we thought it was gonna be a problem, we could come to their public meeting. I wonder if that is a, a regular policy on Forrest's part of where the county is concerned? And if it is, what the parameters are as to when, right now or in the past, they would share something with us because they had concerns or because they were required to share it with us because it met certain parameters? Is that relatively clear?
Yeah, I mean, I think what you're talking about is this mile buffer that we've been talking about, right? It, it was either one of two things, right? So, uh, either the, the development was within a mile of the city boundary, if it was a subdivision, right? It was within a mile of the city boundary and by state law, they were required to send it to the city for comment, right? Or.
Division, but it was, it was a, a project that was going to come before them that it sounded like they were required to let us in on it. But in any event, they chose to tell us about it. So that we saw the fact that they did.
Yeah, the, the other thing it could have been was if it was a, if it was next to city property and, and the city was considered an adjacent landowner. So it, you'll by law, zoning actions and subdivision actions, if you have to send notice to adjacent landowners. So it, yeah, that could have been it too.
It's the Draper subdivision that's right across from Spires. So the Draper subdivision is across the street from city owned, from another city subdivision. And that was in the last couple of years, so that must've been the Draper subdivision.
I think this may have been, um, one of the storage facilities. But they both could have fallen under that because they're all right there kinda together.
Yeah, and it, and it wasn't, it is a subdivision and it's probably been about two years. And so we are, we were an adjacent landowner to that, but also in that one mile buffer. Obviously. So maybe we, maybe we have been notified for, just for comment and we didn't realize why.
So I can just move along here a little bit. Um, so given what Jeremy just discussed about him continuing his discussions with Forrest before we establish a firm date for a joint meeting. Um, and then Jeremy comes back to us in the next meeting and, and, uh, and it gives us an update on what, how that discussion went. And then we can make a decision at that point about setting up the meeting. So how does everybody feel about, about that?
I think that's a way to go.
Is that okay with you, Jeremy?
Yep. No, that's great. I'll, I'll reach out to Forrest, um, over the next week or so. And we'll have a, we'll have a, a thorough discussion on how we think we should, uh, proceed with this. And, and then I'll report back. So I think that sounds great. Um, and then I guess let's, so let's get to the, the future land use map here. Um, I, I guess I wanna get input from everybody on whether or not this looks good now. Um, or, and then my, my other recommendation that we maybe just put this down to our one mile buffer so that we're not showing more than we're kind of required to do. So, um, I think that might help some of that discussion as well.
So let's, let's kinda take it in order. So I'll go around the room and let's talk about the, or go around the table here and talk about the, the one mile buffer. And is that kind of, what do you think, Sue?
That'd be a good idea, but, um, we don't all have those big maps and it's a whole lot easier to discuss if you've got something you can actually read. If he, if he could walk us through the various colors and what's in the various colors so that we can make an interpretation without having to guess what street was adjacent and all of those things. I think it might help.
And done?
So you're, so just to make sure you were clear, you, what you're asking for is if we shrink it down to the miles to the two?
Yeah, so.
I think we should because then it'll leave a lot of questions on all of us. So, and I think we've already agreed to one mile, so I'm not sure why we're still looking at two mile.
Yeah, I, I agree. We, we, we talked about one mile and that's most likely anyway to start with. And I thought you did a great job of, um, calling it out after we were driving you crazy two weeks ago. But I looked through that and it looked exactly like what we had suggested, below medium and high density. Probably my only comment was that you have medium density as a cemetery. And I don't know if maybe city-owned land should be whited out because we have city-owned land within that, within the county. So I don't know if that, that needs to be done or we not worry about it because we're not gonna subdivide the cemetery.
So, I mean, yeah, I, I think it's, this is cemetery, right? Where's, is this a cemetery?
Purple? It's, it's the, the yellow to the light of the purple.
Yeah, he's, he's right on it with this cursor. So it's actually green, so it's low density on here, but, um.
It's higher density, but they just don't move around a lot.
Right, right. So what we could do though is, is that would probably be, probably be more, more appropriate to be open space, right? Because that's, I mean, it, yeah, it's a cemetery, but you're not gonna put housing on it, right? It's not gonna be commercial or, or residential housing because it's cemetery. So I, I would be, I would maybe change that to open space.
Well, then we would also do the, well, okay, the sewer ponds are already open space, so we're good there.
Yep.
So that was my only comment was that, you know, low density for the cemetery wasn't gonna work.
Yeah, probably not.
Other one, you did a great job.
Agreed.
So I'll go back with my discontent of, of the, uh, city boundary at one mile. It, here, as, as an example, um, you look at the south entrance to Red Lodge, um, that's not a mile. It's, you've got your corner cut coming inward so that we're not even considering a true mile from that corner of the city.
So I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to balance this one mile buffer idea with the actual property boundaries and actual section corners, right? So it's kind of a, it's kind of a balancing act where we're trying to do the mile, but because of the way Red Lodge is shaped and, and the way that we have existing land uses down in this area of the city or outside the city, um, we were trying to kind of follow those more, uh, linear boundaries, if you will, right? Um, but, I mean, if you wanna extend this out, so we're looking at exactly a mile, um, then we could certainly do that. I, I don't see any issues with that.
Well, so, so my concern is the, the highway there, where we would definitely wanna continue collaborating with the county on what's being developed along this. Cause it's the entrance to a city.
And that's already all developed.
And I understand that, but things get sold all the time.
But no, there, there's subdivision. Those are all.
Along the highway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are all.
And subdivisions changed too, right?
All one little piece at a time.
So do we wanna have any collaboration with the county on anything over there? It just seems odd.
I, I didn't simply because it was already developed. So the county's not going to grant a subdivision in, anywhere in that area if we were to cut across.
I mean, we, we could, yeah, it's up to you guys. I mean, again, this is your map. So, um, I mean, we were trying to get as close to the one mile as we could, but by also following those, you know, kind of a linear paths, like section lines and property boundaries and those sorts of things. Um, uh, but, you know, if, if you wanna make this more of a rectangle, even though Red Lodge is not a rectangle, if you wanted to make this more of a rectangle around the city, um, you know, we could, we could, we could make those adjustments. For instance, coming over, you know, maybe come over here and down. Um, come over here and down, right? And make it more of a, a nice rectangle. We could certainly do that as well.
Did you have any suggestions on how to adjust, adjusting that line?
So Jeff, you made the point last time of, of collaborating on county-owned land out the northeast enter, you know, north entrance of town. So I just basically, and those are all subdivisions, right? But no. There's a lot of. North, north of it is open, right? So there's room for, there's room for, um, subdivision additions, additional subdivisions, right? So you're saying there are no additional subdivisions possible south of town?
No, there isn't. You've already got Aspen Hollow in there. You've already got all of this that's already been subdivided on the east side of the highway. And on the west side of the highway, all the way down to Waterworks already, if we were to squirt it out off, Aspen Hollow and Waterworks, those are subdivisions.
Um, I mean, it looks like there are some larger parcels in here though that could potentially be subdivided. Um, I, you know, there's one here. I don't know if you could see my cursor, but there's kinda one here. Um, I, you know, I see a few in here. Well, this is in that, in that boundary, but it, it looks to me like there is a few parcels in here that might be developable. Potentially. Potentially.
Are you talking on the west? I can't see it for you.
Yeah, on the west, on the west side, right? So there's some, you know, there's some parcels over here, um, that potentially could, I mean, there are not a lot. I, I would agree. There's not a lot of development potential left. Um, unless they were to annex into the city and go with higher density with city water and sewer, right? But, um, there, there are some, a couple of parcels in here that are potentially could be developed.
None of those have city services either, do they?
Well, that's, that's the other consideration anyway, whether or not we have enough sewer or water.
Right.
To do that, but outside of that.
But I mean, currently there's no.
No, no, they're all on self-aid.
I just, I just said no.
So as far as the, you know, to who's the county to want to collaborate within this buffer? Because we heard Bill Beluc say that they're being presented all these requests for subdivision additions. And if they're not going to approve them or place them or properly size them next to what we think we're planning in the city, they could become isolated forever and maybe the county can't support them and they're thinking the city will annex them. So, I mean, it does make sense for this collaboration and it does prove the county to understand where we're going with our growth and what we can support for infrastructure. So I just wanted to add that before I forgot the next meeting. But, um, you know, I just, I'm just thinking things keep, do keep changing and it would probably be a good idea to put in somewhat of a buffer on each of our entrances. That's, that's all. If nobody else thinks it's necessary or helpful.
So does it, does this look like a better, uh, buffer boundary? It's, it's a rectangle. Um, I mean, I think kind of if you were to extrapolate the city limits out and then follow more of the linear line, lines like section lines and those sorts of things, this is kind of what you end up with. Uh, you know, aside from this, this side of town, it's got this funky, uh, corner, but.
Actually Jeremy, I wonder if the county planning board would be a little more comfortable with just the generic rectangle? Because this is only for purposes of collaboration. It's not that we're, like I said, we're not starting to zone these things or we're not regulating these things. It's just, this is the area where we should be talking to each other, right?
Right, exactly. That's exact, that's a perfectly said. That, that's exactly, that's all it is. Like, that's, that's exactly all this is, is just a, a point where we can all discuss land use within, you know, within this area, right? So, yeah, I mean, we can make this adjustment, um, if, if that's what everybody would like to see. It, it, it does look cleaner, I think, um, having a, uh, but I'm an engineer. I like straight lines, so. This, this fits my, uh, this, this fits what I like, but.
Just to relax a little, just to help people relax and understand this is a more generic thing for purposes of discussion and collaboration. I, I don't know.
I do like, I do like the rectangle. I think it's cleaner and neater and it doesn't say that we're picking and choosing what we're going to do, because this kind of looks like we're picking and choosing.
Exactly.
John, do you have any thoughts?
I have no, not with that at all.
What's that?
So the rectangle is good, yeah.
I like it better too, because, um, you don't, you know, basically where everything is in town. Instead of having to squint and identify this and that, you're not as tempted to do that. You know, this is the north end, this is the south end and here's the east and here's the west. That's a lot more logical.
Okay, so, uh, so I think what we want to do then, moving forward, is we want to, we want to amend the, the one mile planning area boundary um, uh, to this, to this more of a rectangle shape. And then we want to trim everything out outside of that. We, we just want to focus on this one mile buffer area. Is that correct?
Jeremy, I, I don't think you under, I don't think you saw Jeff was, I would like to hear what Jeff thinks about it.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I think, I, I agree. I think for discussion purposes, just, I think the, the rectangular area that you have outlined is a good starting point. At some point, um, cause I suspect when you zoom in on, on that line, we're going to be splitting parcels and other things. And at some point we'll have, the line's going to ultimately have to be adjusted so that that it contains whole parcels and not part, parts and parcels. But I think for discussion, I think, I think it's a good way to go and we seem to have consensus from the board on that as well, so.
Well, again, I, I think, think about this going forward, that this is not a zoning map, right? This is just a planning map that informs potential future land use decisions in the south, for the city and the county potentially, right? And so if you split a parcel, I don't think it's the end of the world, to be honest with you. Um, now if we were talking about a zoning map, that would be a different discussion, right? Um, but this is not a zoning map. This is not an official map. It's just a policy map, so. Uh, yeah, we can make adjustments for sure. Uh, this definitely gets the discussion going, but, um, you know, I, I, it'll be up to you guys with the final map, but if, if we're splitting a lot, I don't think it's the end of the world on this map. I guess is what I'm going to tell you.
Okay. So.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that sounds good. We'll, we'll, we'll make those adjustments, trim everything out around, uh, outside of this buffer area. So we're just focusing on that, on that one mile buffer area and then, uh, I'll, I'll have a discussion with Forrest over the next week and, and kind of hopefully come up with a plan with him on how we want to proceed with the, with the discussion with the county planning board and then we'll, we'll talk to, talk about this at the next planning board meeting.
Well, before, before we move on, I did, I want to make sure that everybody else had a chance to comment on, have, they had any other comments on the edits that, that we made last week? Are you saying?
I'm good.
Sue?
No problem.
All right. So I guess that we're good to go, um, with the, with the rectangle and then moving ahead and having your conversations with, with Forrest and what our next steps are in terms of, uh, collaborating with the county.
Perfect.
So, so for red, done with the land use, uh, map for now, let's, I think we wanted to move on to, uh, the parks and trails. Parks and Trails map. And then, uh, the airport proximity were the next two maps on the, that we had outlined to discuss, so. Um, we'll start off with the parks, trails and public use.
I, I, I don't, I don't have any comments on this one. I guess, uh, yeah, I'd just be looking for the, the planning board to, to, if they see any issues with anything out, outlined on here. But I think this is, this is just outlining existing public parks and public uses within the city of Red Lodge.
And I think the question, uh, that we had earlier was, one, is it accurate in terms of the number of, of parks that are illustrated? I think that needs to be confirmed with the Pa- Parks Board. And, uh, the other, since it's parks, trails and public uses, I guess I'm wondering if we also need to show the dedicated trails, um, that are at least, uh, on this as well, or have a separate map that, that shows the, the trails.
So there is a, uh, if you look at the legend, there is existing trails on here. Now they're not, they're, they're kind of hard to see. So I would maybe recommend that we either bold those a little bit differently or, or a different color or something. But if you zoom in on the map, um, these, these dashed lines in pink are, are, are those existing trails, I think, that you're talking about. So, so they, they are on there, um, but I think what we could do, uh, is, is highlight those better um, because they're, they're pretty hard to see.
Yeah, I would increase the width a little bit as well as maybe change the color.
Yellow.
Sue?
Well, there, there are a number that, you know, how, how official, it, it may be a matter of how official you want it to be before you put it on there or something. But there are a few that are missing, like the multi-use trail is really a multi-use trail. Even though it looks to somebody who hasn't seen it before, like, oh, that's just a long sidewalk on the highway. Um, but it is a trail. And then the ones that co, what looks like it's probably Coal Miners Park, they're probably okay, but as, as you just discussed, they, they're really confusing and they look like somebody borrowed the pen and, and it dropped it on there or something. Um, I'm not sure that all of them are in there.
Are we, are we talking about this one here? Is that what we're talking about?
The, the green one that looks like it's a square and then it has the turquoise color from just beyond the center point over to the opposite edge. I think that, I'm not sure, but I think that's the area in the vicinity of the Wildlife Sanctuary and, um, and Coal Miners Park. But then the part when you get up to the highway where 212 is running out of town, that sidewalk is actually a multi-use path. And it's supposed to be, well, it, it connects, I mean, in a, in a way, it connects from the Wildlife Sanctuary and, and Coal Miners Park connects on out to the far end of town. Um, there are a few others, but I didn't come here with a thought in mind. In, in, um, the part up at the golf course, there is a trail that runs along Pin Ridge Road. It's not shown here, but it is well-used. Um, and it doesn't have pavement on it either, but it has a special kind of, um, surface that's part dirt and part mineralized dirt so that it, it doesn't get muddy. But I think it would, it would mean more if it had some more of the trails actually in there, whether it's pink or purple or black or whatever. Um, and it might be helpful to look at, I think there's some stuff online from the Red Lodge Trails, website that shows where some of the maps are and that could probably help too.
Okay, so what we can do is I think we can, uh, Greg, let's, uh, let's, let's look at the Red Lodge Trails website and maybe, um, if we can't find any, any, any maps of that, uh, or, or maybe we can collaborate with them a little bit and see if we can get some input from them. Um, do you want us or, or Great West to, to reach out to the Parks Board, um, or is that something? Uh, how do you, how do you want to handle that in getting this to them potentially to review?
Getting the Parks Board to review?
Yeah.
Uh, I would say, um, maybe that's something for you and, you and Greg to do. Kind of following along the idea that, that you're the contract planner for the city. And then follow up with, uh, with, uh, Great West.
Okay, so, sounds good. We'll work with Dave on that then and, um, figure out how best to, to accomplish that. But well, in the meantime, we'll also, uh, uh, check in with the Trails group and, and see what, uh, what we can add from their, uh, from their maps and those sorts of things and, and get some of this updated, uh, and over to Great West for, for updating.
So I think there's two groups that need to be consulted with. One is Bear Tooth Trail. And the other is the Parks, the Parks Board. Both of those groups probably need to take a look at both the, the Parks, uh, map as well as the, the Trails map.
Because there's some on here that I didn't know was actually, dedicated park and that's along Pin Ridge Road, the long green, that's all bench. I don't think that that's a dedicated park.
Is that the one behind, is that the Mountain Springs one or is it a different one?
Well, part of it do, does go behind Mountain Springs.
Yeah.
But it's all along the bench there, so that kind of concerned me because the golf course owns it and goes down over that bench. So this didn't make a whole bunch of sense to me.
Yeah, they did think it didn't make sense. Nobody's ever going to use that in the park.
And what's the difference between public use and dedicated park?
So for instance.
Good question.
Because that Moran Park up there in Spires, it's dedicated because of the development, the PUD development and it was allocated.
Yeah, allocated, but, but not, it's not dedicated, so there is no ordinance that's dedicated.
Right, no, and it's not open to the public by any means. It's all gated off and.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's not gated off. You're looking at the wrong, you know.
But it's not for public use right now, is the thing I'm trying to get across. And that, that is subject to change as well if they come back with a subdivision, a request to alter that subdivision. Because it's set by size by the number of lots from their side. So they could, who knows what we're going to end up with there, but it is there for now, right? It is dedicated.
And is it dedicated, Moran Park? Is it dedicated?
No. So I went through and did a search on all, so basically to dedicate it is a, is an ordinance and a double reading. So we have several quote unquote parks within the city limits and, and including Moran that are set up and they're used um, as such, but they're not necessarily dedicated parks. And, and there's, there's some legal, um, distinctions and variations and, and like on this one, Van Dyke, um, is not showing as dedicated and that's a dedicated park.
So would you classify this as open space then? I mean, kind of that, not to say that's, well, open space would be public use though too, but it's not, I, I, I just, that's just a term. I'm just asking.
I, 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 I think the short version that everybody has commented and said the same thing is, is that it is a given that this map is woefully inadequate and incomplete and inaccurate. And I think that there's a lot of work in, in coming up with a more accurate map and a collection of brains.
Yep. I have to suspect that the Trails, uh, group and the Parks Board have good maps and we should take advantage of what they've already developed.
I, I'm here from telling you that the Parks Board, I've been in those meetings and they were like, uh, oh, I didn't know this was a park. I didn't know that this was, so, so if you're under the assumption that they know, I'm here to tell you that's an inaccurate assumption.
Well, we don't know either.
Yeah, and I think it depends on which, which Parks Board in which year to know whether they know about this or that. But there, there is, one of the things kind of comes to the zoning ordinance. Some of those green areas are where it was required that the developer set aside this land.
Right, that's the Moran up in Spires, what, because of the PUD though.
That one and then city, city lights is another one that falls in the category.
Greg, from a planning perspective, is that our responsibility to determine what those classifications are?
Good question.
I, I, so what I've done these, uh, uh, in other growth policies, I've, I've never, I've never split this out like this and, and, and identified what is a dedicated park and what is not. I've only just said, okay, these, this is, this is public, right? So this is, it, this is public, here's the trails. Um, and that's usually the limit to what I do because the growth policy, I don't think is, it, it's not intended to be, this is dedicated park because a subdivision did it and this, like this, it doesn't, I don't know, I, I, I've never felt like a growth policy is the appropriate, a Parks and Trails plan would be a better place to actually do that, right? You're that, in a Parks and Trails master plan, you're diving into those details with that Parks and Trails master plan. So this is more a growth policy, think of the growth policy as like a, a 10,000 foot view of, of the city as it's, as it is now and, and where we want the city to go from a high level. And then there's other plans that trickle down from the growth policy to help you meet those goals and objectives. So a Parks and Trails master plan could come out of that. A, uh, housing study could come out of that, right? Cause it's dialing in the housing needs for the city of Red Lodge. You know, it, it, that's, that's how I would envision, that's how you should envision a growth policy. It's his, is his high level planning document or this is our vision for the city of Red Lodge. Now what do we need to do to accomplish this, right? What are the plans and what are the regulations and what are the actions we need to do to accomplish that? And so I think in this, my recommendation on this map would be to show public use as a light green color and the existing trails and then I would. as a light green color and the existing trails, and then I would call it good. I, I wouldn't dive into what's dedicated, what's not, what's, you know, what's this, what's that? I think if we just accurately depict what's public use on this map, then I think that's, that's the most appropriate thing. That's, that's just my recommendation.
But, but, oh, Greg, you had it.
I was just gonna, which doesn't really build off of what Jeremy said, but just looking at their, their map and the zoning map side by side, it looks like they just extracted what's zoned as P1P, which is dedicated park. So I guess we might be identifying that there's some, some zonings that maybe are inaccurate for what's dedicated and what's not. Um, but obviously that would need a, a deeper in-depth look.
Well, it's been five years since we did the growth policy and the zoning map. So for instance, the new park up by the airport wouldn't have been on our, on our zoning map.
It was dedicated in 2017, yeah, you're right.
We actually have a 2022 zoning map, so.
Yeah, we have a newer map. We have newer zoning, zoning has been updated since then.
So I, I, I'm still going to ask the question, is it our responsibility to classify the, to classify it or is it the Park?
I.
Cause I think there should be a classification.
You're, 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 you're looking at me. So I think when it comes to a zoning map, public use is a zoning category and I think that it is the, that is what is this group's responsibility. But I don't think more granular detail from that is necessary.
My question, I guess, has since the next step after the growth policy is to look at the zoning and review the zoning map ultimately. I'm just wondering if, if there should be, at least within the growth policy map, some di- some differentiation on with, at least in terms of what existing parks are and then what the other public use, city-owned public use areas are because that would, to me, that would then feed into what's the appropriate zone for each of those with. So at least as a starting point, out of the growth policy, having enough information within the growth policy to help, help down the road with making the zoning decision and, 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 uh, identifying, um, what's the appropriate zoning for these, uh, city-owned public lands.
So, so again, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here real quick because I think the, I wa- I, I think you should be careful because zoning has to be done or, or zoning changes and zone maps have to be done in compliance with the growth policy. And the more detailed you get in your growth policy, the, you have to, you, you technically, you're supposed to follow that, right? So if you, if you do it more generally, like we talked about in the future land use map where we're showing future land uses outside the city limits and we just said, well, we think this is low-density residential. We think this is commercial, we think, well, you know, you know what I'm saying? We're not dialing in zoning districts, right? You're just saying, we think this should be. And then when you get to the zoning portion, you can dial in that more detailed, we think this should be this district, right? But you're still in compliance with your growth policy because it, you're, you're zoning it residential. You're just not so, you know, you're just deciding, well, what residential do we want it to be? And so I, I would say the same thing for this. I would keep it more general and say, you know, here's, here's our parks. And, you know, the, these are, these are our park uses, right? And here's our trails. And then when you get to the zone map amendment, now in the zone map amendment, you're going to dial those in and say, well, now what do we want these zone? The zoning, the, the growth policy just says, well, these are public spaces, but how do we want to define those on the zoning map? Does that make sense?
Yeah, except that, that wasn't what I was, I wasn't asking to go to that level of detail. What I was asking is having a map that at least shows what the existing parks are. And then, then the other category on that map would be other public lands without.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying. Um, well, let's, uh.
Cause then, cause what, I guess where I'm going with that is when we do get to zoning, we can look at this map and then look at, look at those two different categories and then make a decision without that, with just a map that just shows parks, but not other city-owned public lands. Then it's just kind of a blank state, uh, or blank slate. And I, I think having a little bit more detail would be going to help down the road. That's where I was going with it.
Okay, no, that makes sense. So I, I think what I'm, what I, what I think I would understand is that, um, it doesn't sound like the Parks Board really kind of knows, so I, maybe it'd be more beneficial for us to work with Dave a- and maybe Public Works to kind of identify, make sure this map is accurately reflecting public uses and park spaces. And then we'll, we'll reach out to the Trails Group or, or, or work with, you know, look at their, their data and incorporate that in as well and then, and then come back with a revised map.
Okay. Teresa?
Oh, just wanted to call out that the dog park is missing and we talked last time about adding the Bastion property. There's an extension of the earthland along Rock Creek there. Um, so there's just two things to keep in mind is this is being revised.
Andy?
Yeah, my confusion is when you're looking at P1 and P2. I think P2 isn't that one of them, like this map here is the high school. So it's a public use, it's not a dedicated park. So if you have one map for dedicated park and then one map that is P1 and P2 would make more sense. Even if you had one map that showed the schools, cause there's only three, and one map that shows other lands that's not park, but it's public.
I think what Jeremy was saying was the map wouldn't even, this map wouldn't even have the P, P1s and the P2s on it. It just, it would just be parks and open space and, and maybe include schools if that's school land.
Or remove it if it's not available for public use, if it's not really a park park.
Well, so yeah, I think what, building on what Jeff said, I think what we do is take that P1, P2 stuff that we, we combine it into one and we call it public use slash buildings or something, right? Because a lot of those, a lot, look, zooming in on this map, right, a lot of these are, have buildings on them. When you look at the P1, P2 stuff, right? Um, there, and then, and then when you, when you scroll around the map, you know, the dark green is the, is the parks, the dedicated parks and, and now we're, you know, we're seeing those, those dedicated spark, park spaces in a different color. But I think if we just combine P1, P2, call it public use slash buildings or something like that, right? Then I think that covers that. Um, and then when you get to the zoning map amendments, then you've got that category and then you've got the park category.
Okay.
To give you an idea, the airport is P1 and it's not on here at all, right?
That is up here, right?
Next to the dog park.
Yeah, yeah, next to the dog park.
Yeah, that, that, that should be a pub, that should be P1, public use, um, buildings for sure. Yep.
And, and I'm confused just because this doesn't even, there's large discrepancies between this and while the current map we have in zoning is, is not complete, that's, if you go to our website, there's stuff on that that is not showing up on here. So this is just woefully inadequate and we just need to revisit it offline and make it more accurate.
Stop torturing yourself.
Well, Greg, Greg, Greg and I, and, uh, it, it will work with Dave and, and Public Works and, and the Trails Group and, and we'll get this, we'll work with Great West to get this updated.
John, do you have any?
No, I, yes, thank you.
Sue?
That's a start.
All right, so I think what I heard is on this map, there won't be any reference to P1 or P2 on the legend. There'll be a category for, for parks and then another category for public use slash buildings, which would incorporate the schools. Is that what you were thinking, Jeremy?
Yes, yep, that's kind of, that's what I think, uh, makes sense to me.
And government buildings? Yeah, that's the problem with P1 and P2 and it includes government buildings and the airport and the schools.
Those stuff is.
It seems like we're going down a rabbit hole with P1 and P2. I think that we need to not reference that at all. I would love to see a map of parks and a map of trails and call her good.
I think that's what we.
Yeah.
But no government buildings, no schools, just.
Yeah, if it's not a park or a trail.
We, we do in our current zoning regulations define what a P1 is versus what a P2 is versus.
There are zoning maps, that's for different classes.
I mean, healthcare facility is P1, so the hospital, the airport, the government building. All of those are P1.
Teresa just stated a little bit and that is, don't, we don't have to, we don't, stuff that's in their zoning document isn't the same verbiage we use here. I'm all, okay. I'm, I'm adopted.
We're all on the same page. I like that.
So, so to make sure that we're in agreement, this map is just going to have two, three categories, one for trails, one for parks, one for open, public lands or public use slash buildings and that, that would include the government buildings, it would include the schools.
What you're saying, no, no buildings or is that okay?
I wasn't fond of the buildings, especially since the county building is bought the old cedar wood, you know, is, I think the, I think buildings are going to, going to shoot us in the foot.
Well, that cedar wood wouldn't be a public building.
It's a government building.
What I'm talking about is, is when I say buildings, it's either a school or it's a governmental, local government facility.
Local. So county wouldn't be on there.
Well, or county, county's local.
It's in the city though. It's in the city.
Cause you have the parking lot.
It is a government building.
So we, we do usually show on a growth policy map, we do shoot, usually show the public use buildings on there. So I think you take, you take, I think if you consolidate, take out P1, two, so it doesn't reference, so you, you're not referencing zoning at all, right? You're just saying, these properties are public use buildings, these properties are parks and here's the trails. I think then you're, then you're covered, um, and then, then that wouldn't include like the hospital, like any, any of the stuff that's zone P1 or P2 that's not technically a public building would not be included, right? Um, it'd just be those government, public use areas and buildings, if that makes sense, governmental buildings.
I'm dying.
We're good. We're good.
Okay. Uh, I think we got air, airport proximity map.
Yeah, we've got about 15 minutes, so maybe we'll just start the discussion here and then carry it on into the next meeting, but.
So I guess my question on this one is, um, and I haven't dialed in, does, and maybe Dave knows the answer to this. Is there an airport, uh, affected area plan for your airport?
There's a master plan under development that has not been completed or adopted yet. And as I look at the pictures there, it looks to me like that's probably kind of in line with that.
So I mean, that.
Twenty-story building on the downwind pattern.
Okay, and so that, that's my main question is just making sure that this is, is, kind of follows that, um, that whatever that plan is for the airport, that are airport affected area. Um, as long as this kind of mimics that or follows that, I think, I don't know that you do much more with this, honestly.
How is this here?
We don't have an airport affected area. The last time we saw this plan, the draft, what, we discussed an airport affected area and that it was not required and that it was not going to be pursued for an airport boundary, only the RPZ. Now, if that's changed, we don't know and this should not be in our growth policy until we know what that airport master plan looks like and if there is entered in an affected area that we don't know about.
So I think, so I think this is important, um, and, and mostly it's, this is important for subdivision development. Because as we, when we did, when we review subdivisions, um, uh, uh, in compliance with, with, uh, impacts, right? From, from different things, airports is one of those things that we review for. And if there's a map in the growth policy that kind of shows those, those buffer areas and those, uh, and, and that development is within that, that, I mean, it's not technically an airport affected area because it's not, it's not a regulation, but the FAA has enacted, right? Which is an airport affected area. But, um, at least with this map, we can, you know, we can say, yeah, this development's within the air, that airport buffer area or that airport area and the, the, the people who live within this are, are going to be affected by that airport, right? I mean, it's part of kind of that subdivision review process.
It, it also means that we have, uh, anybody living within that airport affected area has in effect given up the right to complain about nuisances of any kind, fumes, vibrations, noises, et cetera. And we have not agreed to that on this planning board.
Dave?
So my understanding of the airport affected area, um, and, and it was mentioned that it's a federal tie. So there is no correlation to a boundary or anything else. What it basically says is picture a multi-layered upside-down wedding cake. And, and what happens is they say if you're within this distance, you can't be this high above the terrain. If you're above this distance, you can't be above that high of the terrain. And in practicality, it has, so it, it has nothing to do with noise or vibrations or complaints or anything else. It's just, you can't build a 700 tall foot building next to, so, so it ex- it exists in the master plan that has not yet been adopted yet, that's correctly stated. But in reality, it has no practical implications in our community because of the topology and where we built buildings. We just, we, our, our zoning stops buildings long before they are in range of that at all.
The whole town is in that.
It, it, it is underneath, but what it, so what happens is the FAA will say, you can't have a building that extends more than 1,500 feet above ground level right there. Okay, we're, we're, we're planning on it.
No.
And, and so there's, and, and I have those maps and I can send those on to you, um, Jeremy, if you'll shoot me an email just as a reminder. Um, we can send those on, but those, that's something that has not been adopted by the city yet. But, but the description I just heard of what an airport affected area is, um, does not align with what an airport affected area is. And, and so what basically to, to kind of talk about boundary, there's two ways that you govern or regulate, um, uh, compatible uses is the term that they use. One of those is airport boundaries because then no, you can, no one gets built. We are in the process of greatly reducing our airport boundary, but there's a secondary method and that is just that the zoning around that is, is compatible or not compatible. And then the airport affected area is what the FAA says, here's the minimum heights. And it basically just describes things in feet above terrain. And like I said, the numbers start at numbers three times what we allow to be built at. So there, there really isn't a practical impact.
Yeah, and, and I, so I administer the, the, the Culbertson Airport affected area for the town of Culbertson. And yes, you're absolutely right. The, the, the land use regulations associated with that are essentially just height requirements, right? If you're, if you're within so many feet of, you know, you, you, you can only build this high and, you know, exactly what you said. Um, this map seems like, uh, this might just cause more confusion than anything else. So I, I, I might recommend that maybe we just remove this map from the growth policy and we just reference. and we just reference the airport master plan. And then that way, we've referenced it and then if a subdivision development comes in, then they just consult with the airport master plan and they provide us with that information in a subdivision application that says, you know, we're, we're in compliance with that master plan or this is the impacts to that, 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 whatever we're doing, right? And they can address it that way. That would be my recommendation is that maybe we just take this out. If, since the city is already in the process of doing a master plan for the airport anyway.
So you're suggesting taking that map out of the growth policy?
I, I would say just take it out because my opinion, my opinion is if you're already doing the airport master plan and it's already gonna have these maps in it, that, you don't wanna be, you want the growth policy to be in line with other plans, right? And coordinate with other plans. And so I don't, I'd hate to see this map not really be in line with that map. And now, when somebody comes in with a development proposal, how do we reconcile the differences, right? So I'd rather see this map go away and we just reference in the growth policy that, the, 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 uh, the airport master plan.
I, I have, I have one question about, and it may apply to, to this or may not, I guess, but our zoning regulation wasn't very clear on the, I'm not sure what the right term is, but the approach.
RPZ. It doesn't call it an RPZ, it calls it something else right now.
We call it an airport overlay, I think is what our.
Zoning does, but it, it, all that did was, that just talked about the heights that you were talking about for a certain distance.
Right.
But there was a, there was a subset of that.
The crash zone, is what it was.
Airport protection zone.
Yeah, that was a air protection zone that it, anyway, we had a proposal come before the board to build, um, uh, I think it was.
I think it was a.
It was, was, was multi, multi.
Family.
Anyway, the current FAA regulation said that for a certain distance beyond the runway, you shouldn't have any buildings at all. So I guess where I'm going with that is at some point, we're gonna need to address that in zoning and clarify that, um, airport protection zone or runway protection zone or whatever it's called. And I, I guess where it, with having at least this smaller boundary within the growth policy help us address that issue? Or is it like you were suggesting, we just simply wait till the airport master plan is completed and then, and then base our zoning on, on that?
I, I think if you reference the airport master plan, then when you go to zone things, uh, because you've referenced the airport master plan and, and that, all that information i- is now, it's just, it's techni, I mean, if you think about it, it's kinda part of the growth policy, cause you referenced it, right? So now you can do things, as long, you can go then reference that document and say, well, the growth policy says, you know, we need to do things, you know, compliance with the airport master plan. Now we're doing zoning, we're, we're doing that, right? Um, so I, I, my fear here is that we're, this map might be premature, maybe, um, that we're not accurately reflecting maybe what's gonna be in the airport master plan. And I, I would rather see us reference that plan, because it's gonna be more detailed than this will be, right? And so if you, if you reference that, then I think you're covered.
All right, Zach?
Do, do we know when we might see an airport master plan? Because now, if we're gonna reference it, I don't feel comfortable moving ahead with a growth policy, referencing a document that doesn't even exist yet and that we haven't seen.
And I, I was gonna suggest that that wording should say, um, airport master plan if exists, because that covers it and between now and when it does exist. Cause ultimately it has to be adopted and approved and there's no guarantee that ever happens.
That's right.
Right.
We already have an airport overlay for runway protection zone. So, and, and I think we needed, we talked about needing to expand that. That the cone wasn't spread enough, but, um, isn't that sufficient?
Is there a runway protect? We could show Dave?
Say again?
Is there a, a valid runway protection zone that we could put in and place that?
Well, we, in, in our zoning, we have what's called an airport safety over, uh, overlay zoning district. And in it describes it as 250 feet wide and going out 5,000 and kinda whole bunch of angles and descriptions. And it's represented on our map, so, um, but I think if I understand Jeremy correctly, this is, I guess this, well, or the purpose of, of having that is, it, it, it goes beyond just, as what Sandy calls it, that they're on a protection zone, which is where 85% of aviation accidents tend to happen. Um, but, but, so I, I guess, so we have something in zoning and I think that combined with a if existing map, you know, our master plan covers it. But if I'm understanding the question properly.
No, I, I agree with that because any development has to be done in compliance with zoning as well, right? So whenever we're reviewing a subdivision application or, or, right? I, I keep saying subdivision application, but it, you know, that's where it tends to pop up the most. Uh, when we're reviewing a subdivision application, it also has to be in compliance with zoning. So we're looking at that zoning map, we're looking at those zoning regulations to make sure what they've proposed is compliance with those. So that airport overlay that you're talking about would be part of that discussion, right? And the applicant would have to say, how are we in compliance with that overlay? If, if it's within that overlay zone, see what I'm saying? But I think you're covered. And then if you say, you know, uh, the, the, you know, if we, if we have a discussion on, the airport is currently working on a master plan, um, that will include updated maps for the city of Red, for the Red Lodge Airport, blah, 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 and we're, and we reference that, um, and that will become part of the plan if adopted or something like that, right? Then, um, then I think that covers you on the other side of it, makes it part of that once it's adopted.
That, my only question, I guess, goes back to the runway protection zone. That's not articulated.
Right.
In our current zoning and that's what caused us an issue when that subdivision, that's the part of the overlay, but that's not, that, that, that doesn't address that runway protection zone where the FAA says you won't have any structures built within a certain distance of the runway. We, we, we turned down that, that.
Because of the FAA letter that says that she could not put people in that area.
Yeah.
And we required her to get the letter from the FAA and the FAA said no. So it was a no-brainer on our part.
What I'm saying is that we should, there's, that we should have, as part of the overlay is defining that runway protection zone as, as part of that overlay in which it isn't now. And that's, that's the only thing that I, and that, and that this conversation might be premature for that, but I guess to, to Theresa's question is, if we have anything in here relative to a map that related to, to the airport, would be to maybe have that runway protection zone outlined and nothing more than that in addition to our airport overlay.
So, so just to clarify, we do have it, but in our zoning, we call it an approach zone rather than runway protection zone, but it then goes through and defines a runway protection zone. So we just call it something in our zoning.
So what if we just update this map and rather than call it airport proximity map, what if we call it airport, um, approach map or airport protection zone map or something like that and just bring that, that, that shape that you're talking about? We'll just add it to this map so that it, rather than these boundaries. And so it kinda, it kinda shows that on this map and then, you know, from, and then we also in the document, reference the master plan and, uh, um, kind of make that incorporated if adopted or something like that.
If this isn't required, I think we should just drop this map, frankly.
And, and at the very least, it'd be handy to have an RPZ that clearly outlines where that is in relation to our subdivisions and other developments and whatever, for growth. So people know, hey, don't bother applying there because that's their RPZ.
Percent of your crushes are gonna happen in here.
Well, and, and again, if, if it's already in your zoning, we already have to review for it anyways. So everything has to be in compliance with zoning, so.
Be shot in.
Uh, there's, I'm gonna probably, we're at 7:30 here, so. Um, I think we're getting, we might be getting ahead of ourselves or a little bit since we're talking a little bit about zoning, but, but just to clarify, we don't have an outline of the runway protection zone as defined by FAA in our current zoning.
That is correct.
And that's, that's where the discussion is. And that's, I think where we were going, trying to get at was, should we have, as Jeremy suggested, just do away with this map? And if we have a map related to the airport, just simply have a map that shows the runway protection zone as well as the, the rest of the.
The existing.
The existing.
Truly affected area.
Yeah.
The true affected.
Well, from the runway.
Yeah, well, that's where the danger is.
Well, why, why don't we do this? Why don't Greg and I work with Dave and, and we'll see what, what, what's, what's there and, and we'll work with Great West to see if we can update something to actually that, that may be a little bit more reflective of what's being planned and, and, and maybe what's existing. And we'll come back to the next meeting with, with something a little bit different.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
So I guess, uh, just to, uh, continue on down the agenda, um, is there any written correspondence, Greg, or?
Nope, no, nothing upcoming.
And, uh, any petitions from the audience, Scott? All right. And, uh, other business, I guess, we're just gonna mention, um, and maybe you wanna comment on this, Dave, is that the city advertised for an assistant planner and there was four applicants in the process of, they were reviewed and making, made a recommendation was made.
Um, an offer has been extended. My understanding is it was formally accepted yesterday. The individual will be starting, uh, slated to start on the 23rd of October due to, um, some previous pers, previous personal commitments prior to that point. Um, I was not involved, uh, in the interviewing process, but my understanding is that there was a, uh, pretty universal recommenda, well, completely universal unanimous recommendation on, on, on the ranking of the candidates. And, uh, like I said, the understanding is that the offer's been accepted by the, the first choice candidate uh, with an intended start date of the 23rd of October. And, and were you, were you there for, for those? Do you have anything else you wanna add or?
No, that was, that's basically, yeah, was unanimous in terms of the number one candidate.
And, and I, I guess for, for curiosity and, and commentary, um, the number one candidate that was unanimous on was not the one that everybody would have guessed based on the paper before they got to talk to somebody, which is why we do, um, why we do interviews and, and in-person, um, you know, why, why, why we talk to folks to get them in there. Because if, uh, everybody had been asked to place their bets based on the, on the paper, um, it would not have gone, it went a different way than everybody would again, been guessed based on the paper, which is why you interview more than one person, it's always nice to have multiple people, so.
Thanks, Dave. Any other comments? Do you have anything more, Jeremy, you wanna say or comment on or?
Uh, no, I, I think I'm good. Uh, uh, the only thing, you know, I was just, I brought up the Forest Mandeville discussion earlier, so, um, that was, uh, I, I wanted to bring that up earlier rather than wait till the end of the meeting. So, um, that was the only thing I think extra I was, needed to talk to you guys about, so. Uh, I can't think of anything else, Greg, do you have anything that you can think of?
No, I guess my only comment is that to, you know, for, to the board here is take a look at some of the other maps and if you have any comments, then I think we'll carry on that discussion at the next meeting after, after we review the airport. All right. Meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, everyone, have a good night.